Welcome to the Monday, September 9th, 2019, meeting of the Marquette City Commission. Everyone please rise and be pleased with the way that we're doing it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, if you would please read the roll.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Campana?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mayor Protam Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Stonehouse?
Here.
That brings us to the agenda for tonight, and Commissioners, I need a motion for approval of the agenda. Commissioner Campana?
I would move that we accept the agenda as stated.
Is there a second? Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Any further comments, any Commissioner?
None.
Seeing none, all those Commissioners in favor of the agenda, please indicate by saying yes. Yes. Any opposed by no. Hearing none, it passes seven to zero. That brings us down to boards and committees. We have two new members to welcome, and that would be Mr. Robert Height to the Prescott Park Advisory Committee and Mr. Cody Meyer to the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. If you two gentlemen can meet me at the podium, I would appreciate it.
This is your official welcome. And the county, the city clerk will square you in in just a second. Just like I heard, from now on, yours is more than that than not. That's George. On behalf of the city of Marquette, I would like to present you to the city senate and the Department of Public and City Business. City Clerk, if you can conduct the ceremony, please.
Hi, Robert Height, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and our states and our institutions of Michigan and serve the city of Marquette under honorable his charge and duty from the office of Prescott Park Advisory Committee and serve the city
Thank you both for stepping up and really helping Marquette. Commissioners, we have an appointment tonight, and that would be for Matt Luce to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for an on-expire term ending 01/29/22. Can I have a motion supporting that? Commissioner Smith?
Move that we appoint Matt Luce to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for an unexpired term ending 1/29/22.
Second, Commissioner Schlegel?
Second motion.
Any further comments from any Commissioner?
I just wanted to thank Matt for serving, and I do know him, and I think he will be a great addition to the team.
Great. Commissioner Schlegel, anything?
All set. Thanks, ma'am.
Any other Commissioner? Seeing none, all those Commissioners in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes. Yes. Any opposed by no. Hearing none, it motion passes seven to zero. That brings us down to public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments.
My name is Mary Sullivan, and my address is 54 Sandwood Drive in Marquette. I am on the board of the Women's Center, and I appreciate the opportunity to address the city commission on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Women's Center. With me also is our finance officer, Gail Rinaldi, and our executive director, Beth Cassidy, is on a brief medical leave. The Women's Center is located at 1310 South Front Street, within a block that is zoned for commercial use. The property that is located to the immediate north of our building is for sale, and we are aware that its location may be considered by a purchaser to be an ideal location for adult-use marijuana retail store. In principle, we are not opposed to adult use of marijuana stores. The voting majority in the state of Michigan legalized adult-use marijuana in November 2018. The concern we have is location. The building at South Front Street is not our emergency shelter. As you know, our emergency shelter is Harbor House. But it is where we see clients and their families for domestic and sexual violence services, such as counseling, safety planning, legal advice, and supportive housing. In addition, we also have weekly group support meetings at this location for survivors of domestic and sexual violence and their families. We provide services to men and women, to adults and children. There are specific reasons why we are concerned about a marijuana retail store next to our building. Our clients have been traumatized by domestic and sexual assault, which makes them highly vulnerable to using drugs or alcohol for escape. We see a significant incidence of substance abuse in our clients, and we do not want to put them in any situation that may have a triggering effect on their behavior. Having an adult-use marijuana retail store located right next to us may be that triggering effect for our clients, or may even deter their visitation to the Women's Center. Environment plays a huge role in a person's ability to abstain from substance use. We would be, we want, excuse me, and it is crucial that the Women's Center remain a safe place for our clients to visit. We would be equally concerned if this adjacent property was sold to a person wanting to use it as a retail liquor store.
Ma'am, I must stop you at the three-minute mark.
We are requ, may I have time, additional time?
No.
Okay. Specifically, we are requesting that we be considered a buffer zone, and I have a couple quick questions.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the commission?
Hello, and thank you. My name is Randy Artabe. My address is 1900 Lakewood Road, and I'm here just to, one, reserve some time if I can. Later, I was told that you could be, deserve time for after-year discussion of the marijuana issue. There are a couple of quick things I'd like to say, if I could. We would like to come to town with the recreational marijuana, with the Grow-In Provision Center. We are not interested in being close to this young lady's Women's Center whatsoever. So, ma'am, if we come to town and we get approved, we won't be close. Along with, I don't know if you've read any of the latest rules, but there is some rules with the provision centers now that you do set up some sort of program to help people that have been affected by drugs in the past, which we do have in-house plan for. But we would like you to consider Superior's Finest Organics. We will work with the city on whatever regulations you'd like. We do have a place and spot picked out we'd like to present. We have an engineered, designed building. Along with that, it will be all organic. There will be no footprint whatsoever on any chemicals. It won't be anything used. We have a plan in place for every aspect of this, and been working on it for some time. So I just wanted to introduce myself, and if I can save time for after-year discussion, I would like to do so. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Rule. I live at 408 West Park Street here in Marquette. I am representing the Marquette Lions Club, and I would like to ask for some time to be reserved because of item 10 that's on the agenda for today, to talk about the changing of the name of the Lakeside Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Javero, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, to speak on item 711. These are my opinions. August 26th, I reported a factual incident at McCarty's Cove that spanned only three minutes involving two lifeguards. A woman followed me up to put me down based on her observations on a beach two miles away. She's welcome to commend the guards for their service, but the challenge another resident's comment was deemed inappropriate by this board several years ago. That's why I raised my hand in the audience. Sometime back, a man used this tactic, followed by my plea for him to compliment this board to his heart's content without alluding to opposing public comments. The situation declined when this board failed to heed the proactive warning. These members need to determine whether this is acceptable, and if so, enforce the rule equally, which it has not. The three remarks against me had no bearing on the reported incident. Certainly, I called the fire department off the record as suggested, because the situation was potentially dire. It required immediate as well as public disclosure. Mr. Campana assumed I lied when I'd have no incentive to do so. If I'm ever found to purposely lie, I'll never speak here again. The record shows I did not bash our lifeguards, but reported an incident. There's no way to lie about that, knowing anyone can scroll through those comments in any given minute. Those guards would risk their lives for me, even if they heard my report. They guard our beach well the vast majority of the time. Our fire department is equally dear to us. In fact, I wore their fundraising shirt to that meeting. To accuse me of trash-talking either is ludicrous. Yet Mr. Campana bastardized my comment for his own benefit similarly to August 12th regarding the manager's failure to stripe a busy east-west crosswalk at Front and Ridge. He said my remarks had nothing to do with the manager, but didn't explain why, or what he found funny about my mention of the chance of someone being run down at an intersection that's used to access our library. He used the familiar tactic of responding with statements that everyone agrees with, such as lifeguarding is a difficult job, and they're well-trained. We know that. He neglected to explain why he feels I criticized them when they didn't deserve it. How could he know? He wasn't there, nor did he address any specifics of my report. As a former lifeguard, he knows the hardest part of that job is watching the water at all times. A person can drown in three minutes. He ripped me for trying to avert a disaster, as he did on the manager's failure to stripe a crosswalk, more than a year after being notified. Odd how our last two meetings were my toughest, all because of reported two safety concerns. It's hard to sit quietly while members manipulate public comment for their political benefit. Responding with points we agree on is a known sleaze tactic. I implore the people to interpret our comments as delivered, not what members imply afterward. Their need to devise clever responses seems more important than being struck by a car or drowning in Lake Superior.
Anyone else for public comment? Mrs. Sullivan, I erred by not, suggesting to you that you could have additional time by reserving time. So if you'd like to continue to talk, or continue to present the rest of your case, you can do that as item 11 when it comes up for discussion, if you would care to, again, take your opportunity at that point. So again, my fault for not catching that, and certainly for the Mayor Protam for pointing out the obvious mistake I had made, so, little bit. There is no further public comment. Public comment is closed. That leads us to the presentation, which is the guardian of the quarter. And Jim, if you would meet me up at the podium, I think?
Lexi, we do have a official certificate from the city of Marquette recognizing the tremendous work you're doing over at the children's museum, in making sure he does his job. So, that, and in addition, our Mayor Protam has always been concerned, I think he leaves with a very fancy doughnut and a Z doughnut, cupcake, and there's a second one there for your brother, too. You have to share.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some are born great, some achieve greatness, and some have greatness thrust upon them. I think Lexi is born great, and thank you, Mom and Dad, for letting us have her for a while. She brings in her lunch, sets it in the kitchen, sets about fixing the museum, fixing the animals at the museum, giving them their lunch, but she has the best laugh of anybody that comes to the museum. And the highlight for me was, did she win the fishing award at the State Park, the Pocket Park at the State Fair? Did she win the shooting award amongst all the volunteers we took down to the State Fair? I'm not sure. But to see her showing turtles and snakes and tortoises at the State Fair was wonderful. She's had a wonderful summer, and I think she's achieved greatness, but I think there's more greatness to come for this young lady. She's entering fifth grade, and I think you've got a long way to go. She'll do it. It'll be wonderful. Thank you all very much.
That brings us to a public hearing. Item number four, and that will be the Physical Year 2020 Budget and General Appropriations Act. Clerk, if you can read the background, please.
Thank you, sir. The city commission held budget hearings on August 14, 19, 21, and 28 of 2019. Tonight, a public hearing is scheduled to receive public comment on the proposed fiscal year 2020 budget. Following this input, the commission should consider any changes it wishes to make to the budget. Fiscal effect, a balanced budget has been presented. Recommendation, adopt the Fiscal Year 2020 Budget and General Appropriations Act. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
I will now open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to comment on the item in question, please do so now. Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to comment on the item in question, the public hearing on the 2020 budget, this is your opportunity. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners, a motion to proceed, I think, would be in order. Commissioner Campana?
I'd like to make the motion to adopt the Fiscal Year 2020 Budget and General Appropriations Act.
Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second motion.
Commissioner Campana, further comments?
Just so that everybody knows, this is always a lengthy process for both the staff and the Commissioners, and we normally have four to five meetings, sometimes two to three hours long, but it's, you know, a very important part of what we do, probably the most important part of our, why we are elected. It is a balanced budget. We don't have any layoffs or cuts, and, again, this is all due to the credit of our various departments. And probably this is most notable because we've lost our biggest taxpayer, the Prescott Power Plan. So we're very happy with the budget this year, and it's a balanced budget, it's a good budget. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Schlegel? I'll just piggyback on that a little bit. You know, the meetings are long and stuff, but that's really part of the job, right? I just can't tell you how nice it is to work with the people that we've got throughout our departments of the city. It's one of the only times that we get a chance to sit down with them and really just kind of, you know, hash it out and get to know them. And I feel kind of bad, because I'm not going to lie, I'll pass them in the grocery store and wish I could remember names, but I can't do that all the time. But I can tell you that this process, as we go through it, is one of those things that is crucial to how we run things, and I'd like to applaud the departments and the city manager and the CFO for the hard work that's been put into this process, and I look forward, believe it or not, I look forward to the next time. Thank you.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner?
And yeah, as my first time going through this, I really appreciate the hard work and the weeks and weeks, literally, of time that gets, that goes into ranking projects, understanding what they're, what's being proposed, and how we can continue to offer the services, the wide range of services that we do offer in the city of Marquette. And I just want to raise folks' awareness that what's also happening in Lansing is impacting what we're able to do, and in particular, we've not been able to, we've not, cities in Michigan have not received funds that were originally supposed to go to us, thanks to what's happening in Lansing. So, things are very tight, and we, they folks did a good job of, we've lost the taxpayer with a coal plant shutting down, but there's also other monies that have, owed to us that have not come to us, and I think it's important for folks to realize just how tight our budgets are. And in my entire adult lifetime, we've done nothing but cut government budgets, and I think that time now, I'm over 50 years old, maybe it's time to start investing in our communities again, and I think we do a good, a good job here in Marquette. We can question some of the priorities, but the fact that government is there to serve the people, provide our roads, provide our security, fire safety, and the amenity amenities that we have, is very important, and I hope that in the coming years, we continue to be able to find ways to invest in our community really well. So thanks again to all the folks and staff who prepared the, all this, did all this work for us.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner? Seeing none, and before I call the vote, let me just indicate that our staff has done a remarkable job. The departments to be able to put together that budget package to present it to the commission in a coherent and understandable fashion, and to walk us through it so we're able to really comprehend how all of the pieces come together and the end result in running the city, and doing that with the idea of what's best for the citizen foremost is remarkable. And I really commend them for their ability to do that, and certainly the city manager acting as a ringmaster and leader to make sure that all of that happens the way it has to. Commissioners, are you ready to vote?
Roll call.
I'm sorry, this is a roll call. Yes, please, Clerk, conduct a roll call.
Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Stonehouse?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioners, that brings us down to the consent agenda. I will need a motion to handle that. Mayor Protam?
I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Is there a second? Commissioner Campana?
I would second that.
Mayor Protam, any further comments?
Nope.
Commissioner Campana?
None.
Any other Commissioners? Seeing none, all those voting in favor of the motion indicate by saying yes. Yes. Any opposed by no. Hearing none, motion passes seven to zero. Item number six is the Lake Superior Urban Stormwater Wetland Restoration Project. Clerk, if you would please read the background?
Thank you, sir. The city of Marquette, in partnership with the Superior Watershed Partnership, received funding from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency through the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative for Urban Watershed Management. The goal of the project is to reduce impacts to Lake Superior water quality and public beaches by redirecting between 7.5 million and 9.1 million gallons per year of stormwater into newly created and restored wetland habitat. During the past two years, city staff, along with the Superior Watershed Partnership, have been working with the U.S. EPA in finalizing the scope of the work, design, and bid documents. A total construction budget of $450,000 was estimated for the projects. This includes a non-federal match source for both projects, $20,000 in kind and cash from the city of Marquette, and $85,000 in cash from the adjacent landowner, Islander Beach and Tennis Club. The project consists of two components and was advertised for bids August 5, 2019. Project descriptions, one, the urban stormwater portion of the project, Coleman Engineering Design Documents, will direct water flow from the existing drain, Holly Street Drain, north under Holly Street, to a new drain into the proposed wetland system. The work will involve traffic management, open-cut excavation, management of existing utilities, and installation of the new culverts and ancillary work. Two, the wetland restoration portion of the project, GEI Design Documents, will construct a new drain north into the existing wetland and construction of new wetlands adjacent to the existing wetland areas. The new drain will be excavated into the existing uplands and subsoils. The new wetlands will include a mixture of functional wetland types that will provide habitat for wildlife and migratory birds, as well as increased nature-based recreational opportunities for the public. Bids were opened August 28, 2019, with five bids received. The city staff, along with GEI Consultants, reviewed the bids. All bids received came in over budget, with Baco Construction as the lowest, at a lump-sum base bid of $580,965.35. Fiscal effect, project cost of $450,000 will be reimbursed through the Superior Watershed Partnership, being grant-eligible, with a balance of $130,965.35 being paid for from the Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Utility Fund. Recommendation, award a contract to Baco Construction in the amount of $580,965.35 at the unit prices bid, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, we do have three subject matter experts in the audience that if you have any questions, we can certainly call on. One would be George from GEI Engineering. We have Kurt Goodman here from the city, and we have Jerry from the Watershed Foundation, the actual grant writer. So we have experts available if you have any questions regarding it. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, so my questions are, oh, sorry, I have to...
Suspend the rules for discussion.
Pardon?
Motion to suspend the rules for discussion.
You need to motion to suspend the rules.
Okay. I move that we suspend the rules so that we may discuss these...
Is there a second? We have a second. All those Commissioners in favor suspending the rules, we signify by saying yes. Yes. Any opposed? No. Hearing none, motion passes seven to zero. Now go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, the questions I had regarded, the bids that came in were quite, one bid was, were, there's a 500,000, roughly 500,000 dollar bid, a million-dollar bid, and three bids at 800,000. And I wanted to understand how we felt comfortable taking a bid that was half of what another bid was, was one question I had. Another question I had is, the contract says the work's going to be done between now and September through the end of the year, and I wondered if something came up, and we, thinking of the weather or some other rain event or something, what would happen and how would the, if things, if costs go up again, how would that be covered? And, and what is the, the, you know, is this designed for a 100-year storm event, a 500-year storm event? How, how are we going to deal with what could be an enormous pulse of water that comes through with storms getting bigger and bigger? Those are my three questions.
I don't have those all memorized, but I'll, I can kind of give a background to some of it here. As far as the...
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, sir, George Meister, GEI Consultants.
Thank you.
Lead engineer for the wetland portion of the project. So, as far as the bids, reviewing the prices that Baco had submitted on theirs, the unit prices were all in line with what we'd expect to see for a competitive bid. The other prices that their contractors submitted, I think one of the things we're looking at is the time of year. It's late in the season. It was a crunch, it's a crunch project to get in at the end of the year, and the prices weren't the lowest you'd get, as if you were bidding in the wintertime or for a springtime project. So, that's one of the big parts. A lot of people have work, not really the best time to try to put a project in at the end of the season. I did talk to the representative with Baco who'd submitted the bid afterwards to make sure they were comfortable with it. They said they'd gone back, reviewed all their prices, the scope and everything that's going on, and they were comfortable with it. So, the, there was a big difference between the bids, but I think it has more to do with who was looking to fill some work yet this year, and maybe who wasn't. So, try to see, the other one I remember was regarding the volume of water. So, the culvert part, I can't really speak to, Coleman Engineering did the design for the road crossing portion for the culverts and the vaults there. I'm not sure what they used for their design parameters on that. The, for the wetland portion... The, for the wetland portion, we took the property that was available and maximized every square foot we could get out of it. So, what we know is that there is, there has been a problem down in the past that's been improved and that what we're doing now is going to add a significant additional capacity. We didn't go through an exercise of finding exactly which storm it goes to because there was no opportunity to go any bigger anyway. The groundwater is at a level where we're basically coming down to the ground, the groundwater level and opening up to the, within the full property limits that we have. So, we've maximized everything we can there. The, the project will take that stormwater that currently goes east off Holly Street, divert it north up through this wetland channel to the Dead River, and we're also opening up some larger wetland areas that we can kind of route it through and, and push it into to help, give it a chance to clean it and really remove some of that contaminant and first flush type things out of there. So, other questions?
The third question, well, the, well, how did it come to be that, that we had to have the timing where we're bidding for something at the end of the year? And what happens if it goes over, if something comes up and we can't finish it by December 31st as proposed? How would further or overages be covered?
That might be a better question for Jerry or myself.
Thank you.
Well, that's not an option. We're going to get it done. That's one thing about Baco, we did have some pretty good discussions with them. That's maybe why some of the prices were, were a little bit higher. They've had to put some more resources into it. If something, worst-case scenario, let's say we do get a early, early storm, we will reach out to the grant, grant people and say, this is really unforeseen. The good thing is all the main equipment, like the culvert, the lead time, they can get ordered right away if they need to apply the resources to bring in more people to get the job done. I, and, and I do think it's definitely doable. And I think the main work is in the culvert for the Holly Street disruption. That's where a traffic control plan's going to be very, very important. So, it's going to be phased in. So, I'm very confident we will get it done.
And can you, just a high level, what happened to delay the project for three years? Is there any...
Actually, this project really, like a lot of projects, we work with Spear Watershed Partnership, is, we, we planned like six, seven years ago. The planning for this type of project came when we were doing some, quite a, we enhanced our beach monitoring, sampling program. We, we, we discovered that especially during rain events, we were getting high levels of E. coli. One of the spots was Lakeview Arena, so we, we got funding for that project. And then also this project and also with the investment Michelle Butler did with Clark's Park. We thought it was a huge, it was important to do our part to definitely, you know, look at the water quality. And I think this is a good fix and the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative really liked the idea.
So, this is a Great Lakes Restoration...
Correct.
Investment plan.
Yep.
So, your tax dollars at work.
You got it.
Federal, federal tax, this is the, the federal tax. This is federal money that we're bringing to Marquette that's making a difference.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or discussion? Commissioner Campana?
Kurt, could you come back, please?
I waited until you sat down.
I have two questions, Your Honor. As far as if it doesn't get done in time, if they accept the bid, isn't it on them to get it done? I mean, it shouldn't be our concern.
Yes, we do have a, we, December 31st is when the end of the grant. We do have liquidated damages, you know, in the contract. But it definitely, there is a contractual with Baco that if approved, it'll be signed tonight. So, there is a contract that it, it has to be done by the first, December 31st.
So, would the city have to kick in more money if they have to work another month, two months?
If I could just jump in here, it's Article 4 of the contract. It's a time of completion clause. There's a penalty of $900 a day if Baco doesn't finish it by that date.
Okay.
It's pretty standard language in these contracts.
Question two. 131,000 is a lot of money coming out of the stormwater fund. That must be the reserve fund, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, is that, is that a big hit for you guys? I mean...
Well, actually, there's three different funds. There's water utility, sewer portion, and then stormwater. So, it's probably stormwater carries a little bit more cost. And we'll know the exact costs after we, after the project's completed and the per-unit is calculated. We only pay for what is actually done on the project. So, we are hoping to save some money during the construction period, too.
Good, thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Since you're here, Kurt, are these four people, are they invited to bid this? Or is it an open bid?
Pardon?
Were these people invited to bid?
Oh, we, we advertise it through all the builders exchanges, you know, it's standard practice of the city, especially for a project this type. I had a pre, a mandatory pre-bid meeting and we had six very good contractors attended the pre-bid meeting where we went over the scope. We, we really had some good discussions about expectations and everything, you know. And again, all the contractors, you know, they put a, put a bid in.
Sure, I appreciate that because, and I'm just trying to clarify for you, in, in certain instances in the industry, if you're invited to bid, which is not the case here, but I'm just trying to give you an example, you're going to put a number in even if you're too busy to do the job because you don't, you don't want to not be invited back again. Okay, so there's, there's oftentimes this inflated number that comes in way above and beyond things so that they don't get left out of the game in the future, let's say. And I'm not saying that this is exactly what happened here, but it is something that happens in the industry, which is why you're seeing such a differentiation between those two.
Thank you.
Mr. Frazier?
You can sit down, Kurt. I'll leave you alone. You can, just don't go too far though. I, I agree with Commissioner Schlegel and, I mean, it's open to everybody. I saw the list, all the, all the contractors, I'm all about supporting local contractors. I know a lot of them, they do a great job. Baco's out of town, but they, whenever they come to town, they usually bid lower than local contractors. It's just what they do. They've set, they all their equipment's here, they've done many jobs around town and always like, usually contractors are looking for something to do in late fall, early winter. But there's so much stuff going on in town this year, a lot of them are busy. So, maybe they bid high because they didn't want to do it, you know? If they're looking for work, they would bid low, but sometimes they, contractors bid high because they don't have time to do the work. So, glad they got somebody to do it and they're trying to get it done for the end of the water. It's good.
Commissioners, any other comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to, to move the issue?
Yeah, I...
Mayor Protam?
Oh, I didn't have a... Sure.
Sure.
I move that we, I, I move that we award a contract to Baco Construction the amount of $580,000, $580,965.35 at the unit prices bid and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Any further comments?
No, I'm glad we're getting this done and I appreciate the questions from the other commissioners.
Commissioner Frazier?
I hope it gets done on time.
Any other commissioner comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes. Yes, any opposed by no. Motion passes seven to zero. That brings us down to item seven, the Public Participation Plan. And Mr. Clerk, if you would please read the agenda item.
Thank you, sir. In accordance with the adopted 2018 to 2020 strategic plan, the Community Development Director has worked with various other city departments and the Downtown Development Authority toward achieving certification as a redevelopment-ready community through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. As part of the certification, the city must draft a public participation plan. The attached public participation plan has been reviewed by the M E D C and meets their requirements for the redevelopment-ready community certification. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, adopt the public participation plan as presented. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Mr. Verto, you wish to comment?
Frank Javertoto, these are my opinions. Thank you for entertaining this important item tonight. This gives us hope that our public participation opportunities will improve. Page four reads, "Public Participation Goals and Objectives." "The city shall support and encourage continuous improvement in the methods used to meet the public need for information and involvement. The municipality is committed to seek new and innovative ways to engage and keep the public involved throughout the process," end quote. Very encouraging. See, I've said something positive. The trouble is, I lived in Missouri, the Show Me State. Some of the wording that follows is of concern, quote, "public participation history." "The city has an extensive history with ongoing public participation in community planning. The city has demonstrated a commitment to public participation and the importance of those contributions to the planning process," end quote. Based on my 21 years of involvement, this has not been the case, with too many examples to so much as list in three minutes. This so-called demonstrated commitment has declined over the years, the lowest point being lately. The effectiveness of our participation has been based on who's who instead of the validity of what's said. We've heard a plethora of unrelated participants accuse this board of not listening. The document goes on to read, "Public Feedback. In order to serve the city better, we require feedback slash input regarding how the citizens would like us to communicate information," end quote. Thank you for acknowledging that you can better serve us, however, we're not required to provide input. Desire is a more suitable word than require. But so long as we're required, my response is this. Please institute measures to communicate objectively by addressing our specific concerns without zeroing in only on the portion of our comments that you can finagle clever responses around. Valid concerns deserve discussion rather than subjective responses that run us in circles, meeting after meeting. It would also help if the chair would face the participants instead of writing unrelated notes so often. Continuing from the document, quote, "The city manager and staff are well attuned to the view of city residents and are able to recognize issues that will prompt heightened discussion. This is grossly untrue. Better put, they may be attuned, but they ignore us depending upon who's who on that particular item. That wording needs change. These points will continue to be raised until the desired improvements are realized. To answer the question how to better serve our public, please assure that every citizen concerned that applies to our city receives an objective and thorough response based on the specifics presented. Stop wasting our time and yours by dancing around those specifics for your own political
Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to adopt the public participation...
Let me suspend that request. Are we...
Let them speak first.
Are we doing a presentation?
They could do the presentation. Don't all prove it.
Please go ahead.
Do your, do your wheel and deal.
It's okay. Thank you, mayor and city commission. This is the other city departments right here. Sean, Sean was a great help on putting together these documents. And I'm Dennis Stackwitz, Community Development Director. We're going to do a very short presentation on the next two, this agenda item and the one after it, and that's the Economic Development Plan and Public Participation Plan. Many people know, some may not, we are seeking accreditation and certification in the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. What this program is, is it lets someone know who's coming to Marquette, that we are fair, predictable, have an open public process, have plans, and we have staff and methods to make everything successful in their development and for entrepreneurs and so on and so forth. It really, it's a, it's a means for us to do business attraction, retention, offer superior customer service through our departments, outlining the approval process for people and making it transparent, predictable and efficient. Along with that, we plan for our own new investment and reinvestment. Such things would be like our capital improvement program that we, you'll be seeing in the next month, actually a six-year update to that as well. The... Lost the screen. That's okay, I can wing it without the screen. Without the screen, people actually have to listen to what I'm saying. No secret here, the Economic Development Plan is actually a city charter requirement. It's found in section 13.6 of the charter and basically says that we're going to have an economic development plan. There are, the Economic Development Plan, when you get to it, there are five big goals that stand out. Improve and diversify the tax base, increase and diversify the employment base, support local businesses and encourage their growth, improve the city's relationship with those local businesses and be responsive to their needs, and improve quality of life for all citizens. The Public Participation Plan, which is what you are, have before you now for consideration, it's basically, it outlines how elected officials, appointed officials and the boards and commissions would engage the public throughout the planning and development process. I tend to believe that quoted section of that plan is relatively accurate, seeing that we've won some awards for our public planning processes that we've done, most recently the Third Street Corridor. We've found some very unique ways to go out and do that. And with Sean's help and the help of the M E D C, we've also found ways to add on that. And again, these are all tools for accountability and transparency in government. And that is pretty much the end of our show. Told you I keep it really, really short, but I can't thank Sean enough. He was a great help in doing this. All of the, you know, both of the plans that you're seeing tonight, they've been reviewed by the M E D C and they meet all their requirements and it was not easy. Got sent back quite a few times. So, we're going to go back over to the side table and...
We'll entertain any questions from there on the next couple of agenda items unless you'd like us up here.
Stay there. Okay. Any questions, commissioners?
So, in terms, I think it's important for folks to know, the other, the part of the reason to be redevelopment-ready is it makes us eligible for partnership funding potentially? And if you could elaborate on that? And then, I believe we're the only, we, we be the, only the second community or there's only, there's, it's, we're ahead of the curve on this and could you speak, or last, when we talked about this at a work session, I believe, and if you could speak on that, please?
Sure, I, I'd be happy to do that, Commissioner. As far as redevelopment-ready communities in the Upper Peninsula, there's only one other one, that's Escanaba. As far as I'm aware of, we would be, I believe, number two to do that. As far as funding commitments, when the state pushes unfunded mandates, so we like to call them, they generally, you don't have to be a mind reader to see what's coming. And they've been pushing this redevelopment-ready community certification for the better part of two years now. And the way that they're ramping it up, it leads us to believe, and I've also had side conversations with folks that I can't name here, but we do know that in the future, if you're not RRC certified, you're going to be down on the bottom of the list when it comes to certain funding opportunities.
Is there, would you characterize the state's feedback, positive or negative in any particular way or...
Credibly positive. Their RRC office is generally made up of planners and they're planners that have worked in the field before, have worked for local units of government or private sector planners and they have a lot of hands-on experience across the state and they've been very helpful.
And then my last question. I have noted here with the commission and in, just personally around town, we do seem to have a fair number of empty, big storefronts right now or big commercial properties. Can you speak to how this might impact that generally or is that not...
Well, the redevelopment-ready community designation is going to help let people know when they are looking at the empty storefronts that we have. And we do have two significant ones, the Marquette Mall and the ShopCo site are pretty significant. When site selection, people go through their process and identify these properties in Marquette, one of the things they're going to look at is the development process. Marquette, one of the things they're going to look at is the development process with the city. And that, that entire development process isn't just the zoning and planning department or the engineering department. It includes the Brownfield Redevelopment Finance Authority, if it could be a potential Brownfield site. It also deals with the history of the city commission and decisions they make, and whether or not they endorse things such as the redevelopment-ready community. So having that endorsement is a very positive signal to anyone that would be looking to redevelop those properties, that the city of Marquette is ready to be not only a receiver, but also a partner on any project.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Seeing none, Commissioner, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Frazier, now.
I can adapt. All right, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Public Participation Plan as presented.
Is there a second? Mayor Protem?
Second.
Commissioner Frazier, further comments?
Thanks for all your hard work, and let's look forward to getting it done.
Mayor Protem?
Nothing further.
Any other Commissioner comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes. Yes, and the opposed by no. Hearing none, motion passes seven to zero. That brings us down to item eight, which is the Economic Development Plan. Mr. Clerk, if you would please read the agenda item.
Thank you, sir. In accordance with the adopted 2018-20 strategic plan, the Community Development Director has worked with various other city departments and the Downtown Development Authority toward achieving certification as a redevelopment-ready community through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. As a requirement for achieving certification, the city needed to bolster the previous economic development strategy into an adopted economic development plan. The attached draft economic development plan has been reviewed by the MEDC and meets their requirements for redevelopment-ready community certification, as well as satisfies the city charter requirement for an adopted plan. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, adopt the economic development plan as presented. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Mr. Stackwitz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't really have a lot to add on this one, other than we have gone through a lot of different iterations of economic development plans since the previous administration. At one point in time, we had a two-page white paper, and then it's morphed into various drafts. This one here is by far the best one that we've put together yet. Again, all city departments, Shaun over here did a great job of, of putting that together, and it takes a very, very, a very good look at all of the external partners that we have, but it, it also doesn't commit us to having to pick one or the other to work with. It's kind of like a 30,000-foot-down view that helps us look at our opportunities, potential partnerships that we may have, and how we go about doing that and accomplishing the goals of our community master plan and the RRC program without committing ourselves to one particular strategy or partner.
Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Schlegel?
I'd like to make a recommendation to adopt the Economic Development Plan as presented.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Commissioner Schlegel, further?
Yeah, this is one I've been waiting for, for a while, and I'm really excited and thankful that it's been accomplished. Many years on the Planning Commission, this was something that the Planning Commission was aching to see, and staff and these other committees have really been pounding them out over the last few years with the master plan revision, land development code revision, parks and rec division, re-division, or revision, and a number of just really old, poorly-written, out-of-date documents that the city just has been banging out as time's going on. And this is just, this one here was kind of the last one on my radar from years serving on that advisory committee, and I just want to thank you and staff and Shaun for, for doing a really nice job with this. Thank you.
Any other, Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, and thank you, Paul. This is really, I encourage the public to take a look at this. It's actually short and sweet and is, as he said, a good 30,000-foot view of, of potential work and the plans that have been done. It's, it's a, it's a well-done look at across different, there's arts and culture, there's the capital improvement, which is roads and sewers, there's parks and rec in here, all those pieces come together, the Downtown Development Authority. So, well done. And my question is, when could we anticipate the annual review? Can you just putting that out on the radar? Would that be a year from now, 18 months from now?
We will, we anticipate doing an annual review of the Economic Development Plan that would be consistent with our capital improvements and community master plan. All of those have scheduled, our program schedule dates in there for review. We try to match those together because they're all intertwined, and, and one thing that happens in one of those plans may affect another plan and so on and so forth. And we typically start that process right around February, March every year.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I would thank you for work well done. We, we certainly have needed it for some time. I think it's extraordinarily representative of the city and really does capitalize on what opportunities we do have. And I would just caution everybody, because we have an economic development plan, does not mean that you suddenly economically develop. All the city can ever do is set the table. We can put the china down, the silverware down the right places, we can try and make it amenable and welcoming to developers and the opportunities, but we can't make that happen. That said, everyone voting, everyone in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes. Yes, anyone opposed by no. Hearing none, motion passes seven to zero. That brings us down to item nine, resolution authorizing 2019 capital improvement bonds. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, sir. In order to continue the process of issuing capital improvement bonds for fiscal year 2019 projects, a resolution must be approved that will authorize the sale of the bonds. A notice of intent resolution was approved on July 29, 2019. Projects proposed to be financed with this bond issue are attached. These are projects that have been included in the fiscal year 2019 budget as approved. Fiscal effect, debt service schedules will be produced upon closing, currently scheduled for November 12, 2019. Recommendation, approve a resolution to authorize fiscal year 2019 capital improvement bonds and authorize the city clerk to sign the resolution. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Mayor Protem?
I move that we approve a resolution to authorize fiscal year 2019 capital improvement bonds and authorize the city clerk to sign the resolution.
Is there a second? Commissioner Campana?
I would second that.
Mayor Protem, further comments?
This is just something we do every year, it's routine, so no real comments.
Mr. Campana?
Just part of the process that we have to do now.
Any other Commissioners? Hearing none, this will be a roll-call vote.
Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Yes.
And Mayor Stonehouse?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 10 is renaming Lakeside Park, and Mr. Clerk, if you'd please read the background.
Thank you, sir. The Marquette Lions Club requests that the city commission consider renaming Lakeside Park the Marquette Lions Lakeside Park. The City Commission Policy 2005-01, Naming Parks and Recreation Facilities, outlines guidelines for naming parks. The Lions qualify under section two, item 5.2, "An individual or group who has made exceptional contributions to the city of Marquette by providing direct and significant volunteer services benefiting the public as a local or community leader." The Marquette Lions have volunteered to maintain lakeside parks since 1982, removing limbs, maintaining the park benches and wooden structures, and updating the information display cases. The policy requires support from the community to be provided to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. PRAB was provided the attached letters of support at their August 19, 2019 regular meeting, and voted unanimously to recommend the city commission support the renaming effort. Of special note is that the Marquette Lions will be celebrating their 100-year anniversary in October of 2019. Their first meeting was held at Lakeside Park in October of 1919. Fiscal effect, none with this action. Or recommendation, approve the Marquette Lions initiative to rename Lakeside Park as Marquette Lions Lakeside Park. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Ladies?
We believe that was a pretty clear statement of what our request is. Our anniversary is an exciting time for Marquette community because Marquette Lions Club has been a big support to the community for 100 years. And we would really appreciate the renaming of the park to Marquette Lions Lakeside Park.
Anything further?
No.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Mr. Campana?
I would like to make the motion that we approve the Marquette Lions Initiative to rename Lakeside Park as Marquette Lions Lakeside Park.
Is there a second? Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Commissioner Campana, further comments?
I would think that, you know, since the Lions Club is very active in forever keeping this place cared for and open, that it should be named after them. We should be happy that they take it upon themselves to do this. It's a good community service. It's a small little park on the south side, but, you know, it's, if they open it up and it's in balance with Father Marquette, this will be a nice area of town. So I would be all for this, Your Honor.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you for all you have done and continue to do, and congratulations on 100 years.
Thank you.
Any other comments from other Commissioners? Seeing none, I can only add my commendation to it. It was, it's a great group, you cannot say enough good things about the Lions, particularly the Marquette Lions, and certainly in this instance, they have sweat equity into that park. And I think we certainly need to recognize that as a city and bid them all good fortune. Commissioners, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, and the opposed by no. Hearing none, it is unanimous, seven to zero. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
And thank you. This brings us down to item 11, which is the Marijuana Ordinance Discussion. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read the background, please.
I don't have any background, sir.
There is no background.
I think we just start with the speakers. I think we should just start with them.
Right. We do have a number of folks that have reserved some time to speak. I would ask, in the order that they asked, Mr. Erby to come up. I'd probably slaughter that completely, but.
That's all right, Your Honor. It's Randy Erby. My family's been in the area for many years. Give credit to my father for the businesses he's been involved in. I don't know if any of you have known him in the past, but we had the Honda Yamaha motorcycle snowmobiles in the sands for years, moved it to town, ended up with Pal and Lisa Honda Suzu before Riverside. Anyway, a little background. I just wanted to say a few things. I don't know what your determination is or what your plans are, but again, we're not some big company coming to town. We have a group of local people that are going to put their lives and dedicate it to this. We have a thing we're looking at doing that it will make this secure as a casino. I keep saying secure as a casino and clean as a surgical room. But we have a lot of factors involved, safety factors, smell factors, clean air factors, water factors. We've taken all that into consideration in our plan, and we just ask that you would please consider us to come to Marquette. And if there's any questions, be happy to answer at any times.
Thank you. Mr. Verido?
Thank you, Jeff Verido, these are my opinions. No cover sheet appeared for this item, again causing a citizen to search blindly for a page that wasn't there. It threw off this chairman as well. You've been asked to include a cover sheet for each item, even if it's only for discussion. Any information will help direct us on which angle to comment from. This board is thanked for its open-mindedness regarding marijuana, although it's probably all about the money. I intended to attend last Wednesday's work session, but I work and have a life aside from this commission, believe it or not. A summary of the work session needed to be included in the packet to help us prepare up-to-date comments. It's fitting this item would appear on our agenda the Monday after Beer Fest. Only lately has government opened up to the fact that marijuana, as it's referred to on city documents, is less dangerous than alcohol and cigarettes. Don't take me wrong, I love a good dark beer, even if I do get blasted on one pint. My college buddies would laugh at me. While most of us aren't well attuned to what's happened in Lansing since last November, the shortage of information online is concerning. You'd think this was the first date to legalize marijuana, when there's so much information from other states to go on, what works and what doesn't work. I've driven hundreds of miles through those states and spent many weeks there without so much as seeing an accident or any misbehavior attributable to marijuana. The cops seem to love legalization as much as the rest of us. The commission is accused of no wrongdoing on this matter, but as a state, let's get going. We ought to opt in as soon as our attorney can prepare a list of cautions so entrepreneurs don't risk losing their investments. We can account for the items that are apparently stymying our legislators in Lansing. We do need to exercise caution with edibles, however. Delay edibles for consideration at a later time. Listen to people like the woman from the Women's Center. There are plenty of location options that shouldn't bother anyone. A great attribute of marijuana is that its use can reduce alcohol consumption. In fact, it saved a friend's life. Users exhibit much better controlled behavior and creativity than is possible by getting drunk. Maybe next year we'll have a weed fest. The attendees will leave in an upright position.
Mr. Sullivan, I believe you have some things to still say to us.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Again, our issue is not legality of marijuana, that has already been decided. Our issue is location, and our concern is for the care and welfare of our clients. So, to get to the point, schools and daycare facilities in the city are in buffer zones, which prevents adult-use marijuana retail stores located close to their site. We want the city commission to consider in its planning that the Women's Center location on South Front Street be in a buffer zone. We also recommend that the city commission take into consideration applying these buffer zones to areas that are zoned commercial, but other social service agencies operate there, such as the Great Lakes Recovery Center. I thank you again for the additional time.
Thank you. Commissioners, before we begin, if I can ask the attorney just to reiterate for us the process we're going through. In other words, we have this ordinance, then we'll have a follow-on ordinance, we'll be coming through the Land Development Code that would begin to really address, I think, many of the buffer zone issues that we might have concerns with. So if you could, could walk us through that so everybody understands.
Thank you, Your Honor. If I could just back up for a minute, on Wednesday, last Wednesday, we had a work session, and at that time, we presented the commission with a draft ordinance with one major part of the ordinance that we didn't have an answer for, and that's really the purpose of tonight's discussion, I believe. But after that work session, we've actually revised our draft, and we, I don't have it in front of me to talk about it tonight, but we took some of the comments of the commission into account. For example, the draft ordinance called it a recreation marijuana ordinance, we're going to call it adult use. We're going to make some little changes like that. There's a definitional change we made, it's not important. But really, what we wanted to do tonight, and we'll get that to you, and our plan is to, once we have a final draft, that will be attached to the notice of scheduling the work session for the last meeting in September. But the purpose really of tonight, then, was to, as far as this ordinance goes, to determine the types of establishments that the commission wants to have in Marquette, and then the number of those establishments. As the mayor said, the Land Development Code is going- As the mayor said, the Land Development Code is going to be amended to provide some zoning regulations with respect to this new law. And that is going to track about the same time as this ordinance. And based on the schedule that we've set, it would be ready for adoption, I think, towards the end of October, whereas this ordinance could probably be adopted on the first meeting in October, if that's what the Commission decides to do. And both ordinances would then become effective December 31st. I guess, just to back up, I think the Planning Commission zoning ordinance change would be effective at a meeting on December 16th, because that meeting is the meeting at which this Commission will approve those changes. The Planning Commission will have done its job. The City Commission will adopt those zoning changes on the 16th of December, and then we have to wait 10 days for it to become effective. So we either use the 26th or the 31st. I can't recall what day it was, but it's 10 days later at least. So that's kind of the program is what we're going to try to follow. And I know that Sean has done a brief PowerPoint to show you and the audience, the document that we want to work off of tonight that you've seen.
Okay. So our intention is not actually to pass an ordinance tonight.
Correct.
Our intention is simply to come up with the numbers of establishments that would be contained within that ordinance.
Correct. And then we will put that ordinance in final form.
Right.
And we'll attach it to the notice of the public hearing that will be for the next meeting.
I think that was very important, that we all understand where we're going and what the roadmap is. Mr. Hop, are you ready?
I'm ready.
You may go.
This is a recommendation from the management side of the city. What we did here in the ordinance, and this is part of the ordinance, it shows all of the types of establishments that are allowed by this new law. And then the number of each establishment is in, you'll see that to the right of the type of establishment. Those are numbers that were, that management put together based on looking at other cities, at least one of which was a very similar size to Marquette's. I understand that zoning, the zoning department, community development has, also has taken a look at this, this management recommendation. It may have some other numbers to talk about, but that's what we did. So you'll see, for example, the Class A marijuana grower, the number that was recommended was five, and so on and so forth as you go down. Some are a range, some are no limit, and I think self-explanatory. You want to show the next slide? John? This slide shows the allowable zoning in school buffer map, and maybe someone from zoning can explain this. I don't really fully understand it, but let me just say, based on what zoning told us, in our proposed ordinance, our draft ordinance, we had set the distance as, at 500 feet from a school instead of 1,000, which you're allowed to do under the new law. And we were told because if we set it at 1,000, there wouldn't be any room for a marijuana establishment. If that has changed, I'd like to hear it. I know that zoning's taken a closer look at it, and maybe they have some additional comments. So maybe Dennis, do you have something you'd like to say?
This map. This map right here, the, basically, the areas that are shaded brown are the zoning districts that would be permitted to have facilities underneath the emergency rules that were adopted by the state of Michigan. In other words, they are either of industrial, light industrial, or commercial-related enough to be able to support with conditions created, most of the facilities that are in the emergency rules. The pink areas on the map are the 500-foot buffer on the schools, and that was the number that we had used from the ordinance.
Questions about the map?
So, there were certain classes of licenses that were limited to industrial, and, but then there are classes of licenses that are not limited to industrial, and I think could be anywhere in the white. Is that correct? That's what I don't understand right now.
No. Based upon our research from the emergency rules, those, all of those areas that are identified in the brown area could support all of the, most of the facilities listed. The ones in the black crosshatch are the ones that would be the more intense industrial Most of the white areas are residential uses, like 99% of them.
So there would be no licenses allowed in the white area? Is that what that means?
Correct.
Was any attempt made to also come up with a buffer zone around churches?
When we did this analysis on Friday, real quick, we were just operating based upon, off the draft ordinance that we were given. So we only went from 1,000 feet, or 500 feet from the, from the schools.
Does the Commission have, or the city have the authority to do that around churches?
Absolutely.
Or other religious-related property? Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. I'm confused, because I thought microbusinesses could be allowed in homes? Did I? No. Okay. So, all right. Okay. But a microbusiness is vertically owned. Just, if you could just run through that for me, please, because that's the thing I found confusing.
If you look at the requirements for a microbusiness, they have to abide by all the requirements of each of the separate types of licenses that apply to it. So that's retailer, processor, and grower. And since a grower is mandated to be in an industrial area, a microbusiness would have to be in an industrial area.
Thank you.
Commissioners, thoughts? Mr. Campana.
I want to go back to the Women's Center. Is there any way that the city could feel sorry for them and exclude them from being close to a facility? Or is, are they just Women's Centers out of luck? I mean, would there be provisions from them? I'm thinking there might be other situations, too, like maybe, you know, childcare centers? I mean, other areas other than...
Already, yeah, we...
What? Okay. Tell me.
It says, it said that daycare has to be taken into consideration, although I don't know if it was on the map.
If you look at the definition in the proposed ordinance of school, which is, yeah, you've got it on? Yeah.
So the, the state law that was adopted says, "The property where the proposed establishment is to be located first cannot be in an area zoned exclusively for residential use, and it can't be, it puts a 1,000-foot buffer, which you can shrink relative to pre-existing public or private schools providing K-12 education."
So, is that considered daycare?
No, it's not daycare, but that's what we, we use the language of the Act. I mean, we're, that's what the Act says. You know, it doesn't say anything about churches, doesn't say anything about daycare. I'm not saying you couldn't try and put that in, but, you know, we know what the Act said, too, what we can and can't do.
Okay. And I, and it's very gray, as we discussed in the work session. It's, because this became about through an initiative, there are things that are not clear.
Right. Plus, we don't have the final rules, so anything could change.
Mayor Protem.
Okay. As far as the map and Dave's question, I do kind of feel for that, but I'm a little nervous that we might be getting into spot zoning. And also, I don't think that's us. I think that's going to be, correct me if I'm wrong, Dennis, but the map kind of issues and those are going to be, other than the 1,000 feet, which is what, or 500 feet, is what we're doing, but the Planning Commission will be establishing that.
Yeah, that's, that's very correct, in that we did an analysis based upon the emergency rules and where these facilities would be allowed to locate. And most of them are industrial or light industrial. Some of them may be commercial. This is where it hashes out per the emergency rules. So the next step the Planning Commission would take would be to take this map, and then the emergency rules, and then the guidance from the City Commission if the ordinance is adopted. And then they would come up with particular standards for each one of these parcels related to these businesses. But those standards are, again, zoning in nature, okay? How many parking spaces you need to have, so on and so forth, those type of things. If the Commission desires to have a larger buffer from, or have a 500-foot buffer from things other than a, than a school, then this is the time to talk about that.
Okay. So that's my only question about the map at the moment. If anyone else, I'll go back to my other issues.
Commissioners, further comments?
Your Honor, just say, tonight, we really don't have to get into zoning. We just need to know the types of establishments the Commission is interested in having in the ordinance and the number of each. The only other thing, as Dennis said, the buffering requirements, based on the statute, we just took those two buffering requirements. One is the minimum distance from a school. We put 500. If you want to make it 1,000 or any other number, you can do that. And we also put in language that establishments shall not be located within an area zoned exclusively for residential use. Both are right out of the Act. The other zoning things that you are going to be dealing with later are the things Dennis is talking about, once the, that the Planning Commission will be dealing with even before you do.
Mayor Protem.
Okay. Now with that, I have a couple of follow-up questions with the actual ordinance before I talk about numbers, or we talk about numbers, if we like the numbers, et cetera. Just so I understand the process correct. Ron, so after, let's say we adopt this ordinance, end of October, there's the 10 days. After the 10 days, I had Sean explain this to me a little bit earlier, the 10 days, we would have a 30-day, like, competitive bidding kind of thing? Where people would come and fill out an application, and within those 30 days, we'd review those applications and determine from there who's fit for licenses? Is that, did I understand that, say that right, Sean? I might have got my words a little bit screwy.
Go ahead, if you can answer that.
Yeah, so the actual timeframe isn't set up, but it would be after the ordinance takes effect at the end of December. I believe the Commission can set how long they would like that initial period of accepting applications to be.
But we also realize the process will probably start with the state, going to the state, making an application, get a prequalification from the state, and then bring it to the city and say, "Look, I've..."
Yeah, but we'll, we'll have that, win their application. They're going to bring us that forward. Okay.
And the state isn't going to start accepting any applications until November 1.
Okay. So I, that's fine-ish. I don't love it a whole bunch of going in that process. I kind of prefer a first comfort, first serve basis. That's just with the ordinance itself, and that's why I'm just bringing it up now, because I don't want to come to the next meeting and cause an issue. I don't know if that's an option, or if anyone else is interested in that kind of system.
But let me just say this, too. The statute is pretty clear about the city setting up a competitive process.
Okay.
It's required in the law.
Okay.
So it's not something we've dreamed up. I mean, we...
I just thought, maybe, you thought it was a, yeah.
No, we have to. If we have, let's say, three establishments or five establishments in a particular type, and more people apply, then we have to, under that Act, have a competitive process, which is what we try to set up in the, in the ordinance.
Okay. Those are my questions with the actual ordinance. I'll let other people talk about numbers before I get into it.
Commissioner Smith?
I just wanted to say to Ms. Sullivan that you may want to look at attending a Planning Commission meeting, because it looks like that's probably your next best step, before we get too far down the road on these other things. Something definitely worth bringing up for the future. So as far as the numbers go, do you mind bringing up that slide? Do we have it? Or no, we're not doing that? Thank you. So I see the staff recommendation, as I said in the work session last week, and as I will continue to say, I am in favor of not setting limits and letting the market and zoning dictate how this will go as a city. That being said, in good faith, I'm willing to compromise. So I'd like to hear what the other Commissioners have to say.
Commissioner Hill.
So, one of the obvious comparisons is to liquor establishments and how liquor licenses are allocated, which I do not claim to understand at this moment. And so, but I understand that there is a limited number. I don't think we make the bars compete with each other. So how does that work now? I did, when this all was getting started, I believe we had 15 liquor licenses for the, I can look it up. I had someone look it up for me. And we actually have more bar liquor licenses than we are necessarily would normally, a city of our size would have. That I do remember. And then there's temporary licenses that sit with the Downtown Development Authority, and the number was over 100. And that had, not, there's a variety of different kinds of liquor licenses, temporary like Beer Fest, but then also things like what's at the hotels, what's at restaurants, things like that. So those numbers are much bigger than the numbers we're talking about here, and I wondered if anyone could speak to that.
I don't know if there's a correlation or not. I know that it's very difficult to get a liquor license. I mean, they're rigorous either at the state and local level, but I don't know that, I really can't tell you there's a correlation, or I've read anything that suggests that we ought to have the same number, we shouldn't have the same number.
I was actually speaking more to the process. Like, so, I mean, my sense is that the market, people bid and buy them from each other, and it's, the government's not involved?
Right. I mean, if you've got a liquor license for sale, there's usually someone who's willing to buy it. Yeah. But not with this. This, these licenses are not transferable, and they're one-year licenses.
Okay. Well, that's helpful to understand.
Yeah, I was just going to say, from our standpoint, I don't, I'm not going to claim to understand all the intricacies of liquor licenses, but the DDA has a special designation where you can establish a facility, a bar, in the DDA and purchase a license for a set fee. When you leave, the license disappears, basically. Beyond that, the boundaries of the DDA, there is essentially a set number in Marquette County that, I don't know how it was allotted to begin with, but they're all owned. So if you want to open a bar in Marquette County, you have to find someone that is holding a liquor license and willing to sell it for you for whatever price you can reach. So if you look at the, the list is publicly available on the state website. There are several on there of businesses that are no longer in operation, because it's, the owner is holding a liquor license and waiting for a suitor, I guess.
But the reason it's not, just to be clear, the, that's something that someone buys and owns. This is something that's only good for 12 months, and of course, in these first 12 months until the end of 2021, you have to already be holding a medical marijuana license before you'll be even eligible. So anyone at this beginning stage, and then it's going to potentially change, and I, we talked about it at the Wednesday work session, that this would be, again, something else we would look at on an annual basis as we go through. So this will be our first attempt, and we would certainly, I would anticipate, will be revising it. Plus, the state laws will become final, plus there's probably going to be lawsuits to help set boundaries on some of this stuff. So, just to put all that out there as well. And in terms of numbers, to answer your question, I am also leaning towards having the market decide. I, I think in the zoning, I mean, it's already fairly tight, and in areas of town where we have decided that we want to have commercial establishments, and that's what we went through the Land Development Code process, the master plan process. So I am comfortable looking at that. And that said, I could be open to conversation, but it does seem like we, we have a process in place to identify where we want commercial establishments, and that's where these would go, for the most, for the most part.
Sorry, Mayor Protem.
All right. Numbers. I don't hate them. They're not terrible. I do have... Um, I do have, I would be more inclined to be agreeable and compromise, because I'm also on the same boat as, um, Jen, Commissioner Hill and Commissioner Smith, that I think that the market would dictate this, I think zoning shows where, where they would go, and just like any other business that opens in town, you just get to plop it there. Um, but I do want to make this get started, and I, I think that our, the public wants it to happen in general. So, the only one, the only two that I take real issue with, or wish if anybody would be willing to discuss on the numbers, is a temporary marijuana permit. I would like that to not be zero or one. Um, I think that that's actually what people have told us, I think our residents have asked for, like, you know, some kind of event that includes marijuana. I also think the marijuana retailer cannot be five, I think it has to be higher than five. I think ten is probably the least I'll go down. Other than that, those are the only two that I take, I think, need to be a little bit adjusted. And I, when I'm talking temporary marijuana permit, I'm not necessarily saying unlimited, but at least like, we should have one or two in a trial kind of period, not zero.
Two for, yeah, truth of the air here, I guess. Other commissioners, any comments? Commissioner Frazier?
It's all interesting, I'm waiting for the state, finding what their finalism, we're making provisions for, if it is gonna be though, but I think, I mean, people compare it to, to beer establishment bars, I mean, it's a good, it's a good, it's different businesses, you know? It was a legal product, just like liquor is liquor, was it legal a long time ago? Became legal and everybody does it differently. I mean, there's, if you wanted to open a bar right now, there's rules that says, okay, follow the specifications, do this, do this, this, and, you know, here's what you gotta do. Suppose that, if you open up, or open, say, if I wanted to open a pot store, well, these are the rules, we think you should follow, I think you ought to follow these rules, maybe these rules, and don't do this, don't do this, and like, so there's no rule, set rules yet from the state, that's what, I've talked to many police people, and they, law enforcement people, they said, you know, it's okay if it happens, but we don't know how to regulate it, we don't know what to do with this, you know? And other people I've talked to, medical professionals were not, I mean, medical marijuana is one thing, but medical department was not in favor of it, you know, just my two cents, and, I mean, I think a lot of it's still gray area about, okay, where can we do it, where can't we do it? And, like, I hear from, you know, Shopko area and Market Mall, about all the places that are, could be doing something, but then, you're next to hotels, and, you know, Shopko off-street's the only place you could do something, but, I mean, then you worry about, okay, what's next to it, what's this, what's this, you know, and like, well, there's a, you know, a medical facility that does rehab right behind Shopko, the old GT shaft, and there's, you know, not really nice, Office Max, you got, you know, Joe Burger's ice cream, not much for, but I guess, there's so many gray areas, I just not, like to wait and see what happens to the state level, if the state level will figure everything out before we have to, okay, say, so we do this, or this. When the state gets the rules in session, that's where I'd be in favor of doing it.
Commissioner Campana.
As we look at the numbers, I mean, we were given recommended numbers from city staff, and I'd be fine with those numbers. I mean, we're just throwing a dart here, so it really doesn't matter that much. As was pointed out to me earlier, I don't know why you'd want, why a grower, processor, or tester would even want to be in the city, price of property being steeper in the city than it is in the surrounding townships. I mean, if you're gonna grow, why don't you go out in the, you know, wilds, where it's, you know, land is cheap, you can put a building up cheap, you know, as opposed to doing it in Marquette. So I don't think that's gonna be a problem. You know, you could say two, three, five, ten, I, I, I just don't believe they're gonna do that in the city. If I was gonna put one up, I wouldn't, you know, I'm looking for the cheapest place to do it. So that's out of the city. Uh, the only thing I can see that's gonna be in the city is gonna be questionable would be the, uh, um, pot shops, um, retail shops. I don't believe we have a recommended quantity of five or ten, up to ten. I can't picture ten stores making it in the city, I just can't. Um, I mean, if that's what the commission wants, I'll vote for it, but I just don't see that many, uh, market, uh, competition will keep it down. So I think, uh, what we have here, recommended by the city staff, to me, would be fine.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Schlegel.
Thank you, your honor. Um, geez, Dave, we, we agree. Uh, I, I have to go along with what you just said there, I mean, I don't think that we need to put any limits on, I mean, quite honestly, with, with any of the, uh, the Class A, B, or C growers, because I just don't see it happen. Um, I, I just, I don't, uh, I don't think we need to worry about excess marijuana grower, I'd say zero there. Um, processor, retailer, and, and I guess, here's the deal, I'm, I'm a bit more conservative on this. Um, I, I want it to be allowed, but I don't want a lot of them around, quite honestly. Uh, and we can say ten, we can say five retailers, or micro-business, whatever, but again, business is gonna dictate, you know, who's gonna be left at the end of the day. So, uh, a conversation with a friend of mine said, you know, there's probably gonna be one really nice one, that all the cool people that want to come and visit Marquette, go and visit, and it's gonna be like walking into Studio 51, and then you're gonna have this other one that's kind of like, where are the locals going? Because they want to go to that. And I thought, you know, business is gonna dictate what's gonna happen. Um, I really want to put, I wanted to put limits on this really bad, I did, but I just can't do it, uh, and then come back in a year and say, here's where we need to go with this in the new direction after what we found. So, I'm gonna go with, uh, i, if I was gonna put limits on it, I'd say I don't want to see A, B, or C in the city of Marquette, as far as the, uh, marijuana growers, but that's just my, uh, my personal opinion there. And I can go, uh, be very flexible in the other areas, knowing that, uh, that we're gonna be able to review this. I like the living documents, the living process that we've kind of adopted over the last few years in the city of Marquette, so that we can review things regularly and keep them current. Um, and I do have a feeling, uh, that we're gonna see further regulations come through from the state that are gonna even further, can downsize these, uh, these other options as we move forward, so that's my four cents.
Vice Commissioner Smith.
Mr. Mayor, could I make a motion, please? Would you like to make comments? Oh, I thought-
Um, I think a motion-
We're not doing a motion today?
We can make a motion, absolutely we can. Motion?
Would you, would you prefer to comment before I do that?
Yes, if I can. Let me just, as the last speaker here, I think, make a comment. I can support what staff has written. Um, I think some things are a little bit high, I don't think you're gonna see a grow operation in the city, because the land is too cheap outside of the city. And, uh, to me, it, you're gonna follow where the best money is for the operation, so I don't think that's gonna happen in the city. I think politically, and this is an important component of all of it, is that I think, while we have a lot of folks that, that want this to happen, and we have a lot of folks that want it to happen without any limits, we also have folks that are not comfortable with it happening, but I think will accept it if they see some limits on it. And whether those limits turn out to be real, because the market's gonna find out where it is anyway, or whether it becomes just a matter of good policy, we can, we can talk about, but in the end game, the market's gonna determine how many you have of what and where they are, it, to some extent, so I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I'm also comfortable, certainly, that we arrived at this consensus, I believe we have, through a process of really, uh, compromise, of people giving up a little bit and people taking a little bit, and that's the way government works, should work. It always should. And you might look at Lansing and say, boy, there's not much compromise going on down there, and you're right, that's a whole toxic environment. But this commission, I think, has clearly demonstrated that ability to compromise on difficult issues like this. So I certainly can vote for the measure as presented, I think is presented. Commissioner Smith, the, uh, table is yours.
I agree with everything you just said, Mayor Stonehouse. Um, the motion I was gonna make, after hearing the comments, was to, um, I move that we move forward with no limits on any of the categories.
No limits on any category?
Correct.
Do we have a second on no limits? We have a second with Mayor Pro Tem?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on no limits? Okay, all those in-
Yeah.
Wait, wait. Yes, we have to go back to the motion, motion maker, any further comments?
No, sir. Um, the only comment is that I appreciate making the motion, I don't know if it's gonna pass, Jenna, but then after that, we can go back and go try again, if, if not.
Yeah, that was, I-
Commissioner Hill?
Um, uh, it might be, well, we go back to the, what's on the, the piece of paper, there's some, um, I think, uh, I think I could, I guess I wanna, I, I ask, the, the, you're, in, in making that motion, what you're seeking to accomplish is to let the market decide and the zoning decide, like, that's sort of baked into what you're saying?
Correct. You know, the other piece of the puzzle that we haven't really talked about is the competitive bidding, or the competitive process.
Yeah.
Um, if we leave it wide open, we don't have to get involved with the competitive process and, and kind of play favorites that way, so it eliminates that piece of the puzzle for staff and the commission moving forward.
And if I, can I build on that? Um, that would be, it's the staff time around managing the competitive process that I'm also very concerned about, that we would now get involved in vetting these organizations when there's a whole state regulatory process that's gonna be doing that, and I don't think that we need, um, our, our staff time at the local level to be devoted to that. I'm concerned about that being a big drain on our, potentially on our resources. And I'm also concerned on the, um, temporary marijuana event, if we're only gonna, again, if we are gonna say, maybe start out with one, how are we gonna decide that? Um, who's gonna get to do that? Um, is it gonna be because it goes the most money to charity, or is it gonna be because, you know, I, I'm, I'm very concerned how that would play out as well. So I, I can lean towards having no limits as a, as a one factor being the staff time question.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and the motion is to have effectively no limits, correct? So all those commissioners in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Uh, I need to count on that, one, two, three, four. All those commissioners opposed, signify by saying no. No?
No.
And that gives us a four to three, no limits.
All right, we got someone.
Discussion is done. That brings us down to public comments.
Good evening, my name's Casey Hahniger from out on West End from Republic again. My only question for the council, if one of the commissioners can answer it during their time at all, are we gonna be looking at medical anytime? Medical marijuana also, so that's the main question I have, we're looking at rec, rec, rec. Well, us licensees have to be pre-approved and have our medical licenses, or we have to wait until November twentieth of twenty twenty in order to get our licenses. So that is a big question that I have for the commission, if they're looking at medical, so, thank you.
Anyone else, public comment?
My only question is on the stacking of licenses. For instance, if somebody wants to come in and do the Shopko, and you don't-
Can you please give your name, sir?
Randy Arterby, I'm sorry.
You have to say it every time.
I'm sorry, I have to say it every time, please.
Randy Arterby. If, for instance, somebody wants to develop into the Shopko building, you don't want to restrict them on their numbers if they can't grow enough to support the, the building and the structure and the business at Shopko by not leaving, but as you voted, there's no limits on any of it, correct? Is it, so that's open, then we don't have to worry about which licenses are which? Thank you much.
Anyone else?
Frank Chavertot, these are my opinions. August twenty-sixth, Mr. Stonehouse criticized me for saying our three minutes are mandated. This board mandated the three minutes. There isn't the time or necessity to expound in such trivialities as if I wouldn't know that after twenty-one years. He's desperate if he feels the need to nitpick to that extent, he has no other straw left to grab. Mr. Frazier pressed the repeat button on his tape recorder again. All of that was addressed August twelfth in his absence. He had no business attending on August twenty-sixth unless he'd reviewed our entire previous meeting. His repeating is so contagious, he's got me repeating. Again, there are managers I've gotten along with. Of course, no one agrees with everything anyone says over the course of years, married, most married couples can't go a month. Quoting from August twelfth, "I admired Mr. Vida and wish he'd never left. Another ex-manager and I exchange Christmas cards each year with short letters," end quote. I'll show him if he won't believe me. To Mr. Vida, I say, please come back. He won't, because toward the end, the memo he published about founders read more like something I'd write. Mr. Frazier went on to say for the third time that if I want to make a difference, run for an open seat. His advice is bogus. Ms. Campenzi is the best example. She cast the dissenting vote many times. The best member we've ever had was allowed to make little difference. Despite her tactful manner, this board subtly treated her like an outcast. She went on to prove that U.P. residents favored her one vote over six politically motivated ones. Judging from the subversive measures that members use to criticize me, I'm having a greater impact here than I could with a dissenting vote, and without having only three days to read three-hundred-page packets. Mr. Frazier has yet to respond to why he thought I'd mentioned me moving the fence along the rocks at Lighthouse Park, when the record shows I'd referred only to the northwest fence eight times. He's not comprehending what's being said. How do unrelated people allege that Museum Drive is a conflict of interest? Note how every inch south of the lighthouse benefits the museum, except for the trail, which is nice. What's left, though, is an eyesore compared to what we had. August twenty-sixth, when I gasped in the audience at Mr. Campana's mis-truth, Mr. Stonehouse asked, I give them the same respect they give me. Just one meeting earlier, they'd interrupted me without cause. I mean, how short a memory does he have? They are due no respect from a public standpoint. Regarding the four men on this board, let us review the record to determine whose accounts are more reliable. It'd be like playing chess with five-year-olds. They've been told repeatedly how to get rid of me. Instead of manipulating my comments to their advantage, address the specifics to show that I'm generally wrong. I'll apologize profusely and quit speaking at this venue.
Anyone else to address the commission?
Margaret Brum, four oh four East Magnetic Street. I'm here to announce that there will be a public presentation on the history of Cliff Dow Industries on Saturday, September twenty-eighth, from one to three P.M. in the Peter White Public Library. It'll be open to anyone who wants to come, children ten and above are welcome. Um, I'm the presenter at this presentation. I went looking for a history of Cliff's Dow. We have so many histories and so many historians in this city, and much to my surprise, I could not find that anyone had compiled a history of the Cliff Dow manufacturing site, either before Cliff Dow was created, during Cliff Dow manufacturing, or the fifty years since Cliff Dow was shut, was shut down. So, um, I took it upon myself to put together some, uh, history, some facts, some Freedom of Information Act requests, a lot of correspondence back and forth between various people, various parts of the city, various parts of Northern, various parts of, um, the government. And what I'm trying to do in this two-hour presentation, and I don't think I'll be talking for a full two hours, is give people who are not familiar with Cliff Dow, along from the name Cliff Dow, what it was, uh, what it meant, and what its impact upon the city had been and continues to be. And I, I think this is useful information, uh, from a historical perspective, but I also think it's vitally important information from a future decision-making perspective, because, um, one of the documents that I've, I've been reading for the last week, um, specifically makes the point that some, uh, fifty years after the site has been shut down, uh, various aspects of the manufacturing process are still being detectable. And this is the sort of thing where you think after fifty years, uh, it would have all gone away, and it simply hasn't. So to sum up, um, Saturday, September twenty-eighth, from one until three P.M., I'll be presenting. Uh, also, if any of you have any historical records of Cliff's Dow, pictures, family stories, family anecdotes, anything related to the site, please contact me. Uh, the more, uh, human stories I can get, the less I'll be quoting from documents, and I've already gotten a few, um, good discussions going. So I welcome everyone's attention, and because I know this members- So I welcome everyone's attention, and because I know the members of the city commission can't all be in the same place at the same time or violating the Open Rules Act, I'm going to repeat it at the end of October. So if you want to come, you can come to one or the other without violating the Open Meetings Act. Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else? The comment is closed. That brings us to comments from commissioners. Commissioner Smith, if you would lead, please.
We accomplished a lot tonight. We got the budget passed, we dealt with marijuana, at least a piece of it for now, and some other unfinished business, but we're just keep plugging along. There's a lot of bucket list items that we've been chipping away at over the years, and it's good to see some action. That's all.
Mr. Schlegel? Thank you. Yeah, good to see something moving on the marijuana legislation or the rules and regulations for the city of Marquette. It's early, you know, there's going to be plenty of time for things to manifest in different directions, and, you know, I think that by taking an open-minded approach to this is going to be the right direction that's going to lead us to the best resolve, I think. So we'll see how this pans out. Always open for input from anybody that wants to have a conversation about it, and appreciate people on both sides of the fence coming in and being a part of the discussion so far. I would like to say that this was probably the best beer fest I've been to this past weekend. I want to thank the city of Marquette Police Department and the Brewers Guild for their amazing presence as far as security goes down there. Very few instances, is what I've heard, as far as issues with people taking it a little bit too far, and the ones that were, that I only saw one, and it was handled right away. So, you know, in order to have an event like that, or anything that might be related to anything else we're talking about tonight in the future, I think it's really important that, you know, it's well organized, and they've done a fabulous job over the years of bringing that event to us and bringing a lot of people into our community, so that was a lot of fun. That's about it, thank you.
Commissioner Campana?
Thank you, your honor. Marijuana question, I think that those issues are going to settle out. They shouldn't be any more controversial, probably, than short-term rentals were for us, so hopefully, you know, it's a non-talk-about thing. Couple other things. Wednesday, the 18th Household Hazardous Waste Collection will be done at Flink Farm on Pioneer Road. Thursday, the 19th, Music on Third.
11 o'clock.
On Thursday, the 12th, Mona Lang Retirement Party. Mona, who has contributed so much, so hard for the city for so many years, has done an outstanding job, will be retiring from the DDA. What else? Wednesday, it's 9/11. Let us not forget that day. And finally, your taxes are due Saturday, the 14th. Thank you.
I'm sure, Commissioner Graham, I'm sure Gary loves that, you said Gary loves the fact that taxes are due, that's his favorite time of year, he loves taxes, it's just his favorite part of the city. Likes the money coming in, doesn't like the money going out, but likes the money coming in. Mr. Virgil loves to comment on our mayor writing down notes or something during a meeting, but he's running a meeting for the city and doing a great job. And that's why he's writing stuff down, he's not just sitting in the back, looking at what everything's doing, just complimenting everything, he's just like, just doing his job. And Mr. Virgil talks about 20 years, well, for 20 years, he's been commenting about everything wrong, every commissioner's doing, every mayor's doing, managers, everybody's doing, and we've asked him before, you know, you can run if you want, Frank, and see if you want to do something. He's just openly says, no, he won't, but he doesn't really, everything with his comments doesn't apply to anything that's going on in the city. Other people talk about, okay, marijuana is a big issue, people talk about that, talking about where to do, where to do, that's an issue in the city. That stuff comes up, okay, I have a problem with the city, that's going on, but Mr. Virgil loves to comment everything that a commissioner does wrong. Commissioner Mayor, he just, he focuses all his attention on what everybody's doing wrong. Not him, complains about everything, and Sarah Penzi was a great commissioner, but she left us and decided to run for the state. She's doing a great job with the state, we hear a lot of good comments about that. And again, but it's, there are seven of us here, including the mayor, and like you saw with the marijuana thing, it takes four people, four people to win a vote. Everybody decides differently. You know, one person makes a big difference, you can get your voice heard, doesn't mean it's going to get a top, but one person can make a difference, can, you know, tell everybody what they feel, but doesn't mean it can make a difference. But in this case, four people felt like they wanted to make a difference, and they made a difference. It's good for them, it's good to see it going through. The states, we're going to get their fingers to figure it out, but, so the state gets figured out, we'll have, like, microbrewers, when, you know, everything is compared to beers. Microbrewers started going, there's just a few people going, and now it's huge business. I foresee, you know, the pop business getting bigger like that sometime eventually, be the same thing, you know, I don't know, but we'll see, and there's no, I don't completely have time to say, oh, there's nothing wrong with it compared to beer. No, I think you heard lots of good things about the marijuana issue, but then I've had doctors tell me, you know, people that smoke it can get lung cancer. I said, really? They said, well, it's just a natural product. They said, it's the smoke that harms you. Any kind of smoke, whether it be cigarette smoke, marijuana smoke, any kind of smoke you're dealing with can cause cancer, that's what I've heard. And interesting story online today about a kid's school getting candy that was, you know, induced with a little marijuana, got brought into school, the kids would go to the hospital, get treated for it just in case. You know, you don't see beer getting brought into school and kids drinking alcohol, just one thing to think about, and we'll see what happens, and yes, like, Paul Schlegel said, it was a good beer fest, stopped out at the end, good things going on, a lot of happy people, amazing people, come from everywhere to go to that thing, and town was hopping, all the restaurants benefited from everything, great, great event, and they had their security down there in full force, even the coast guard was down there, everything was in full force, and we're good, there's no big reports of any industry, so looked great, and another event next year, maybe.
I have three events I want to highlight coming up before our next city commission meeting on September 30. And I also want to ask staff, what is the next date? If you could just put us, put it out there one more time, the next, in this marijuana conversation, the next step is planning commission?
No.
No, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Maybe this is a good time just to remind the public, this is important, that really, the, no ordinance has been adopted.
Thank you.
Yeah. All we did tonight was try to complete a draft ordinance that had left, we had a gap in. We needed to know the number of establishments and the types of establishments that we should put into our draft ordinance. On October 15, there will be a public hearing in which all of the provisions of the draft ordinance will be open, and will be available to the public to discuss and challenge and do whatever they want to do. But all we did tonight was decide how we're going to complete this draft. It will be finalized, and it will be attached to the notice that we have to do to give the public notice of the upcoming public hearing, and that notice will be with the agenda on the 30th of, that's our next meeting, right, September 30?
Yes.
So that notice, scheduling a public hearing for the 15th of October, will be, will be approved at that meeting on the 30th of September, and attached to that notice will be the final draft as we have it. Then on the 15th, the public will get a shot at it, it'll be a public hearing, and the entire ordinance, including the number of establishments, the types of establishments, everything is open for discussion. Nothing's been approved tonight, other than we've been given direction as to what to put into this ordinance, our draft.
Thank you very much. The three events are, this Saturday is both Pride Fest, a UP Pride Fest, happening from noon to 10:00 p.m. at Taurus Park, and a new event called the Crop Swap. I know I have more zucchini than I can eat, and cucumbers, that I have too many of, so you're invited to come to Gravert Elementary, to the space behind the school there, and come meet fellow gardeners and share some vegetables, is what we're sharing there. And that's being put on by groups that are promoting sustainability and growing your own food in Marquette and the UP. And then coming up on September 26, which also happens to be my birthday, is cupcakes are invited, but is the opening of Lighthouse Park, and we're going to have a ribbon cutting for Lighthouse Park at 11:00 a.m. on, that's, I'm not sure what day of the week that is, but September 26. And then also, you may have seen, the construction has started at Prescott Marina, and so there's going to be work to improve that facility that started this week. Thank you, good work tonight.
We did a lot, when you think about it. Think how far the city's come on marijuana. How, I think everybody's come on it. It's been a long journey and an interesting one, and as commissioners have talked to it, we've come a long way, got a long way yet to go. And the attorney, I think, spread that out pretty good and explained it so we all understand a little bit better about how that trail is going to take us. And as he indicated too, every step of the way is transparent. Every step of the way, everybody who wants to be part of it, who is, well, the public and the interests of the public will all be there. It's got a ways to run yet, but a lot certainly accomplished last, tonight. Couple of great events that we had, certainly, the Blues Festival just last weekend, or the weekend before last, and then the Beer Fest on this one, fantastic. When you think about a little town like this, and being able to put on quality events like that, just absolutely remarkable. A tribute, not only to the people, but a tribute to the people that come here to see those things. That said, city manager, floor is yours.
Thank you. First, I'll just put it out there that if the commission wants to somehow deal with medical marijuana, we can certainly do that into the future, but I think we need to be directed by the commission. I would suggest, however, that you, I know it might not work for the people out here, but if we could get through this recreational one first, and then we can deal with the medical later. But again, I'd like to be directed to go in that direction, because up until this point, the emphasis has been not to opt in.
Couple comments. I want to thank Dennis and Sean for their good work on the Economic Development Plan and the Public Participation Plan, especially Sean, who spent a considerable amount of time doing this, and I will say probably did a, as good a job as anybody in that, in that area. I have open office hours this Wednesday, 10 o'clock, the Peter White Public Library. I'd like to mention that the Kiln Project is underway on South Lake Street. I haven't been there myself, but I have to imagine it'd be like watching someone assemble a puzzle, that really you have no idea how it fits, but I'm being told it can be done. And then lastly, I want to thank the, and recognize the Beautification Committee for their efforts on the graffiti cleanup in the city. They've pretty much taken it upon themselves to go after this problem, identify areas in the city through the police department that have been damaged through graffiti, they are working closely with the Public Works Department in cleaning this up and making sure it's done correctly and not damaging anything in the process. That's it, thank you.